Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started tonight, I have a proclamation I'd like to issue, and it's a really interesting one that is growing across the nation. So I can ask our Parks Director to come up, please. Kim Farrell, please. And I'm going to read this. Whereas one out of every two U.S. adults is living with a chronic disease such as heart disease, cancer, or diabetes, which are leading causes of premature death and disability. And whereas walking as a physical activity provides many health benefits, including helping maintain a healthy weight, reducing risks for heart disease, stroke, type 2 diabetes, depression, and some cancers, as well as improving quality of life. And whereas, step it up, the Surgeon General's call to action to promote walking and walkable communities. Calls on Americans to be more physically active through walking and calls on communities to better support walking and walkability. I think we do a fair job on that, and we're improving every day.
Absolutely.
And whereas, local government can play an important role in promoting physical activity and building walkable communities. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, supports the Surgeon General's call to action to promote walking and walkable communities and declares September 26th, October 3rd, and October 10th, 2019, as Move with the Mayor Day. Now that, you know what that... Does that mean that we have to do this now?
We actually have to do that, so that's correct.
Declared this, "Move with the Mayor's Day" in the City of Beaver Creek and encourage all city residents, take a walk on those days and every day to increase physical activity and improve their health and well-being. And so I'm going to present this to our Parks Director, and I would invite everyone to come out and join me on those dates, and we'll see how far we can go. So, thank you. Please, tell us a little bit.
Sure. So this Thursday morning, we'll be at Dominic Laffino Park on Grinch Hall Road at 9:30 in the morning. If you're able to make that time, we would love to have you come out, join us, join the mayor, walking with us. Next Thursday, we'll be at Russ Nature Preserve. That's more of a natural trail, so just as an FYI. And then the following week, we'll be at E.J. Nutter Park. So each Thursday, 9:30 a.m., I encourage you to, just call up the Parks and Recreation Department, we can get you registered. So if there's any changes in the schedule, weather, we can reach out and let you know. But if you're not able to make those times, certainly encourage you to get out and walk that day anyway.
And this is going to grow over the years, right?
It's absolutely going to grow, yes. We're going to keep it going, and we're not going to say, hey, just these days, walk. We're going to make it a year-round thing.
All right. Thank you. (applause) All right, I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting over. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Littlel?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion for Councilmember Upton.
Second. I have a motion and a second to excuse...
Microphone.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Upton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I would now like to turn the meeting over for a moment to Councilmember Rushing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we would, please all rise for the pledge in a mono silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a mono silence, please. Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as admitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. The minutes tonight are from the August 26th regular scheduled meeting. Any comments?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 26th regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is Resolution 19-53.
This is a resolution to adopt a cemetery master plan for the City of Beaver Creek.
All right.
Sorry, I thought it was more.
I was waiting for more, too.
Okay, so it's not just me?
No.
All right, great. Sorry, Diane, I tossed you under the bus again. My bad. So tonight, we have Jose with McGill, Smith, and Punchin to talk about our cemetery master plan. We did this last year. We went through a work session. There were some things that we were trying to follow up on before we do the final presentation. Jose is here this evening to do that, and then afterwards, we would ask for City Council to adopt that master plan.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's always great to talk about, you know, such a great, in a great community, a great project, so I really appreciate the time. And as Kim mentioned, this process that we went through last year with stakeholder groups, but also staff, was a very inclusive process to get us to where we are today. The project goal was obviously to create a variety of offerings within your cemetery to provide your constituents with different opportunities for burial, and, you know, I think something great that you guys are doing for the community. So today, I would just like to briefly go through the process that we went through, some of the recommendations, and hope that you endorse what we've been up to. So through our planning process, we wanted to make sure that we created a master plan that was inclusive, both from understanding the site, understanding what the data has given us, and making sure we talked to the right group of people, both from staff level, maintenance level, but also people in the community. So we had some open house and designed charrettes with constituents. We gathered that data, came up with alternative concepts at key areas to create an enhancement plan. And today's, in today's world, we have trends in the Ohio area, in our Midwest area, about 40% cremation, people are using that. And of the 40%, probably 15% to 18% of those people with, that utilize cremains, go to a cemetery. The rest end up at home or other places. So our goal is to help you understand, or help the constituents understand, how we can create a beautiful gathering place to be able to utilize cremation opportunities as another service that you can provide in your cemetery. So as part of our process, we analyzed the site and looked at some of the opportunities and constraints of Mount Zion. We identified areas where there was room available to do different gardens and plazas that would allow for what we call columbariums or niche walls, which are facilities or elements that can house cremains and urns. We also studied, you know, South Fairfield Road, knowing that it might be expanded. So we had to take a look at all these things. As we went through the process, we identified three key areas. The area along North Fairfield, some, one in the middle, and then the entrance off of Indian Ripple Road by their maintenance building. So we, those are the three areas we concentrated our efforts in. This is the area by the maintenance building. And here is a concept that we felt was appropriate based on the input that we received, providing some additional parking, a possible future maintenance structure slash office, and then providing some cremation niches, columbariums at this entrance. And you'll see this here at the end of the presentation with a little bit more detail. And then we also did some alternate locations of buildings. So we wanted to give your staff and the city some opportunities for phasing, but also options as things evolve, how you can use this master plan to implement within the cemetery. And these were some inspirational images. We showed these images to the constituents that we dealt with in the open house to show them kind of what we thought this might look within the cemetery. So again, these are just character images that we thought, and we, people had, gave us input, and we got some guidance from that. The area, too, which is kind of in the middle of the site, if you, you probably all know obviously where that is, and you remember the triangle piece that used to be the old right-of-way, that sits up here. So we've provided some opportunities for what we call memory walks, which are walkways to accommodate pedestrians, obviously to get to different unique areas. These areas being areas that would have these kind of elements. Wait a minute, did I go, am I going backwards? How am I doing that? Sorry. And those, that's the view, but these kind of elements that provide focal points, so as people are driving on Indian Ripple Road, we, you can see and provide some unique spaces for different columbariums. So these were those inspirational pieces. The key piece to this is along North Fairfield Road. That's where you have a, some room to create some of these spaces. So we wanted to create plazas and gardens that can accommodate a lot of these columbariums. In our experience, other communities that have kind of done this almost in a shotgun scenario is they put these columbariums in the middle nowhere, and they don't sell, or they, they're not in a nice setting. So our goal was to create a sense of place, an opportunity for the living to go visit their loved ones and feel the, a sense of serenity and, you know, something unique. So we've created this garden along the front that has multiple structures, it has water features, and we'll show you some examples here shortly. And here were some of those inspirational images. So here's some views. This is looking southbound, and then some of the close-ups, and I'll show you a video here in a second that you'll see. But here are some of the recommendations that came through to provide a variety of cremation opportunities, really look at pedestrian connectivity, make sure visually we have interest so we can attract people to buy here and to buy spaces for their loved ones. Additional recommendations for the middle piece, and then I'll show you some examples here of the Area A by the, by the main office building. So here's an example of what we are recommending be Phase 1. Phase 1 being along the office building to provide some columbarium niches that have fully accessible plaza, to be able to have landscaping and be incorporated into the existing fabric of the cemetery. And this is kind of what we recommend is be the first project that comes from the master plan. Let's see if this works here. So this kind of gives you, you know, we see site plans all the time, but graphically, this is coming off of North Fairfield going, and you turn paralleling, and this is what our intentions are. So as you can see, the street to the right, a garden walk that has columbariums, scattering gardens, memorial walls, seating opportunities, water features, places to have services underneath this structure, but also having columbariums on the columns for niches. So this is kind of what we've seen in our industry that our cemeteries are doing to capture or give your constituents the opportunity to use cremation as a way of honoring their loved ones. So with that, we would ask that you approve this or consider this, what's important to the community is, and approve this. And if I may add, I would love to add Mount Zion to your walkability. I think that's a great facility. Maybe you can do that next year. It's a great place to walk, it's got some great, great trees, great shady spots, so I put in my, I would throw that into the hat for walkability maybe next year.
There you go.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'd just like to follow up from your last year when you were here. I thought the presentation was excellent and just top-notch, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And I really believe that that will bring Indian Ripple right there together, especially with the plan. So I'm really pleased with the work that you've done.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you for that.
Very nice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, you have an ordinance before you. Any discussion, further discussion?
I would move for the approval of the concept plan that was presented by this consultant for the cemetery plan. I think the individual pieces as... What? Resolu... But I would, so I would move for approval of it as a concept plan, knowing very well that as the specific pieces are developed, they'll come back before City Council for, as the details are presented, we'll be able to review them again.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I have a motion and a second to approve resolution.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure the motion is actually...
For a resolution.
To approve the resolution, but I heard the concept plan, but the motion's for the resolution.
Yeah, we don't have the details for some of the sections. We have the concept, we have a general idea.
But tonight's motion needs to be for the resolution.
But this just creates a master plan. It does not create any action.
Correct. I just want to make sure the motion is for the resolution.
I just want to make sure that the staff realizes that this is not a green light to never bring it back before City Council. I think that as the specific site plans are planned for the various areas, it does need to come back before City Council because...
Councilmember Van, I appreciate that, but your motion needs to be to approve the resolution, because what I heard was a motion to, for a concept, to approve the concept plan. That will not approve this resolution.
Well, I just want to make sure staff understands that, that as the details are...
We would have to fund it, Julie, so obviously it's going to come back, and I'm sorry. I should have said, I should have said Councilmember Van. I'm sorry.
So procedurally, do we need to withdraw the motion or vote on that motion and then vote on the resolution?
I will, I will move to approve Resolution 19.53.
And withdraw the first motion. I think we should withdraw that one.
Because it was seconded.
It was seconded. Yeah, it needs to be withdrawn.
You withdraw your second.
Yes, sir.
You withdraw your first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then a motion. Thank you.
Now we're ready. Go ahead and do it again, please.
I move for approval of Resolution 19-53.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-53. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
It is a great plan. Thanks.
Next, ordinance 19-20.
This is the first reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 137 Weapons Control of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new Chapter 137 Weapons Control of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Ohio Legislature and House Bill 228 made a number of changes. I won't go through all of them. They were quite lengthy, but some of the ones, one I thought was interesting was the less impractical to raise your hands. If you have a permit and you're in a vehicle, you know, you need to raise your hands in a certain position, but, so they made an exception there. They also made an exception for a spouse or guest who's driving your car and the permit holder happened to leave the, leave a weapon in the car, and technically, then that person would be, under the old act, would have been committing a crime. So there is, there's an exception there. There's also several exceptions with respect to where the places where people can carry. There are some provisions and clarification that police officers or officers who are licensed to carry can in fact go into certain facilities that otherwise, under the old law, technically they were prohibited. So even in some cases, even if they're, whether they're on duty or off duty, another example is provision where someone could be in an outdoor facility that is having some sort of function, and there may be alcohol being served, but as long as that person is not drinking, that person is allowed to be there. So there are just some cleanup, I think, some cleanup provisions that probably came to light over the years where the code had been applied and unintended consequences. So I think that was some of the intention, plus a little change of modernizing the definition of a shotgun, as an example, so.
So this just would bring us in compliance with state law?
Correct, yes. And this goes into effect at the end of the year, so we had effectively one year to adopt this.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve ordinance 19-20, repealing and adopting new Chapter 137.
To move to the second and third reading.
Yes.
Any further discussion? I have a motion to move ordinance 19-20 to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 19-21.
This is an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, and to amend ordinances 18-28, 19-1, 19-3, 19-12, 19-17, 19-18, and 19-19.
Sir.
Good evening. Just as we had mentioned in the past, there was, we've had quite a few natural disasters and man-made disasters, and we need to account for them here in the future. What you have before you is a couple of insurance claims. On August 28th, a vehicle hit our attenuator, which is a big arrowboard designed to make sure nobody hits any of our workers out on the street. This was on US 35, and they totaled that when they hit it. Surprisingly enough, this, so it did exactly what it was designed to do, except they're not supposed to hit it, they're supposed to follow the arrow.
Yep.
And ironically enough, this is the second one that we've been through in about five or six years. I think the last one, when we replaced this one, got hit several years ago, but it is covered by our insurance. And again, with the arrowboard, and we actually had to have it towed, and we had to rent an arrowboard to continue the project. With all that combined, we'll be submitting that to our insurance company, we'll subrogate that out and get the money from the person, the driver's insurance company. So we have to actually appropriate the money, and then we'll certify the revenue for the insurance proceeds, and the total on that was $24,325.
Wow.
So things are fairly expensive. Again, they sit on the back of the truck, it did its function, it protected our guys from getting injured, so that was a good thing. The next thing is a, Tobias Zimmer Barn, as you all recall, that barn was basically considered to be totaled by the insurance company, and we're still working out the details of the replacement and what's going to go back in there, but in the meantime, we had to appropriate money to clean up the location and to separate the wood. So again, all of the planks and all the wood that we could save, we did, and we've staged that at another location. But again, we have to appropriate the cost associated with that, and that's $7,763. And again, we'll appropriate that money, but we'll be getting that back from our insurance company, so. The third thing is that we got, we sustained a lightning strike at the golf course, and it knocked out two satellite boxes and a voltage regulator. So the cost of those totaled $16,581. Again, a separate insurance claim from the tornado damage that we'll talk about in a minute, but the bottom line is that with our insurance, they're going to pay us the amount minus our deductible for that. So again, the total cost was $16,581, and we'll certify the revenue of $14,081, and again, that would be minus the standard deductible for that particular claim. Again, we're doing a lot of insurance and claims here, but the golf course actually sustained quite a bit of damage on the tornado event, too, and they spent the whole day cleaning up the fairways to make the course safe. And also, one of the major events out there, a fundraising tournament was actually canceled. And again, we have through Miami Valley Risk Management Association, our insurance pool, we have business continuation insurance. So again, we filed that claim with them, and they'll provide us, they're going to, they actually have provided us a $10,536 check for those lost revenues, and so that has to be certified as revenue coming into the golf course. A non-related insurance claim is the golf course just recently got a order for special orders from one of the high schools, and they came in and they wanted us to order a whole bunch of material for their golf team. And again, we've already expended our special order revenue line item and our expenditures, so again, what we're going to do is appropriate that order, that $3,200, but it's offset by $4,000 worth of revenue after the markup, so we'll certify that revenue into the golf course fund. And the last thing is the senior center. We received a grant from Greene County Council on Aging for a new six-passenger van that's going to replace our 2005 minivan that's been around for a while, and the maintenance costs are increasing pretty dramatically here. So the van that they picked out is $51,527, and the grant is up to $40,000. So we need to appropriate the 51 and bring the $40,000 in and certify that revenue as grant revenue for the partial offset of that particular van. And with that, and again, the reason why they picked that particular van, again, we're going to get a lot of more fuel economy on that van. It's going to be used for the longer trips for smaller groups, and the fact is that the volunteer drivers like driving the smaller van versus the bigger 16-seater van. So this worked out in everybody's favor to get that in here to rejuvenate our fleet, so. That's it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, just always spend a lot of time filing insurance claims, you can see, over the damage and a couple of the acts of nature and human nature, I guess.
Anyone?
Were there any other things in the neighborhoods or with the businesses that could have, any of our responsibility for stormwater or for whatever, that could have been put as a claim because of tornado?
Not on our insurance, no, because again, there wasn't a direct cause in effect for city property. That's basically what we're insured for.
Yeah, and the park there had no, nothing at the park that could have been, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
We did a complete review of all the parks right after the tornado hit, and this was the only one that actually had physical damage.
Or, sure.
Again, trees falling down and not hitting anything are not really covered under your insurance. Trees that fall down and hit a structure or destroyed a bench or things like that, those would be covered. So we did a complete inventory of everything that we had out there, and that was the only claims that we had so far.
Yeah, the fencing out there wasn't... Thank you for checking on that.
No problem.
All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-21. So we don't, we'll have a second and third reading on this one.
Roll call.
All right. So any further discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littlel?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. Next, I think this might be yours as well, Resolution 19-54.
This is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Slide show. Over. Slide show. There you go.
It's tough to do without my glasses even being up here. Okay. So we're, we just received the rates and the dollar amounts related to... So we're, we just received the rates and the dollar amounts related to our levies for the 2020 budget. This is actually the third phase of the tax budget process. Again, we've submitted the tax budget to them. That was back in July, you recall that. The county Budget Commission met, approved the rates and the tax budget that we submitted. And now they've sent over the preliminary tax rates and amounts for 2019 taxes payable in 2020. This just goes to show you the values that actually, they're increasing just slightly a little bit. You can see that the trend here was, again, you have the recession, and this is always kind of a year behind. It was actually going up, and this year compared to last year is pretty much the same. So these preliminary numbers, the bottom line is that the next phase is that the county auditor will submit these to the actual state. The state reviews them and actually finalizes the number, and that'll be done in between November and December. And we're going to be using these numbers right here as part of our 2020 budget. So that'll be the revenue that we'll be projecting out. What we're doing right now is internally, all the departments that submitted all their budgets, we'll be reviewing them, I think it's the first week in, or October. And then once we get those meetings, we'll be making all sorts of adjustments to the budget, and then we'll present those for your review. I believe we have the city council review of the budgets on Monday, the 18th of November, and then the second meeting on Wednesday, November 20th, if I've got those dates right. And then the final step in this whole process is to approve the appropriation budget that we'll be doing on December 9th at the final council meeting of the year. So with that, staff recommends approval of the rates and certifying them to the county auditor, and those have to be, by ORs, they have to be into them by the end of September. So, happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? This, the reduction because of the tornado property values, that'll show up next, next time, not now.
Well, when I talked to the county auditor about that, the bottom line is, is that he believes that that number, and we talked about almost a half million dollars, is fairly minor compared to the total that we received. But again, he's thinking that that is offset by his conservative estimates. So I don't think he's going to, you know, drill these down any further. I think he thinks that these numbers are pretty much right on, because again, when they're doing these projections, they don't take into account any payment of delinquencies. And we know that from a standpoint that the city usually receives pretty much about that same amount in delinquencies. So he's thinking the numbers are pretty good for right now.
Okay, thank you. Can you address the Paralis legislation that was proposed?
I can give you my Peter Steijos version, what I think they're trying to do. I think what their attempt is, is to, rather than have the individual residents file the documents and get all that through the entire process while they're dealing with other things, I think they're trying to give the opportunity for the county auditor to just declare those and to expedite that process. So again, he can make that declaration so that they don't have to worry about it. So, because again, his, the options that he has is, you know, partial or total. I mean, there's not a whole lot of difference in his designations, but they want to give him the ability to go in and do that on behalf of the residents. Is the way I understand it. I didn't read the bill or the proposal or anything, but that's the way it's been explained to me.
And Mr. Mayor, has the Green County auditor ever discussed using an alternative form for the tax budget, or, I mean, some counties use an alternative form, Montgomery County. I don't know if that, just out of curiosity, I didn't know if the Green County auditor's office has ever discussed that.
And David Graham has actually implemented a couple of changes from the previous auditor in the fact that we don't really submit it in a format that they require anymore. We basically send in our proposed budgets, really, so it made it a lot easier to go through that.
Right.
The other thing is that they used to have us attend all of the budget commission meetings, and that was a half a day of a lot of fun, but they've eliminated that. So the Budget Commission now just reviews it based on the format that we submit to them, and it's really streamlined the entire process. Again, it's, it's one of those things that we're doing, it's statutorily, but again, as far as the meaning and, you know, where those numbers are derived and challenging our numbers, whether or not we think that's going to be the final version. That process seemed to be a lot of waste of time for a lot of folks. So he has streamlined that entire process, and it allowed us to be a little bit more flexible to use our documents rather than put it into their old format, because that used to take us probably a week just to put it into their format, even though all the information was the same, so. But yeah, he's always looking into alternatives out there to save him and us some time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 19-54.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-54. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Mayor, I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Okay. In that case, we will back up. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-54. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. Next, resolution 19-55.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as the GRE SR 835-0.00 Resurfacing Project, PID number 108934.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm giving mayor, members of city council. Last year, the city received word that our application for urban paving program funds was approved by the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing at Research Boulevard. The project itself, it begins at the county line within Montgomery County, goes all the way to the eastbound ramp, exit ramp to US 35. It includes the milling of the pavement, pavement repairs and repairs to the median island on Research Boulevard. The overall project cost is approximately $2 million, with half that cost being paid for through this grant. I should also mention that we also applied for another grant for the same project. That looks very favorable. So at the end of the day, it looks like our share will be even, even less than what it shows on the agenda on report. Anyways, the attached agreement is necessary to delineate the funding and project responsibilities for the designs project. Any questions, be happy to answer.
Do we have any? Do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of resolution 19-56. Oh, that's not it. It's 55, sorry, the one before.
Yep.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-55. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you.
Could I ask about the trees that used to be in the median there? Is there any hope that we can do that? This is just resurfacing.
Sure, yeah, the project is.
That's an enhancement.
Absolutely. I know over time, our street departments, they've been planting certain replacement trees in those islands. And, you know, I'm not sure, but I would assume that would keep on going. But with this particular project, we have restrictions about using highway dollars for trees, yeah.
I knew it was a separate deal, I just.
All right, next, resolution 19-56.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as Kemp Road Sidewalk Project, PID number 110374.
Thank you.
Yes. One of our successful grant applications to any of the RPC last year was a project to build pedestrian facilities along the portion of Kemp Road between the two Grange Hall roads. And part of the reason why I think they accepted the application and why we applied for it, we have many projects planned in that general area, and this is a real nice connection where it connects other pedestrian facilities that'll be built over the next couple of years. It kind of links those together. Construction is planned for the fall of 2023. Overall, project construction costs estimated to be $627,000, with the grant funds paying for $344,000 of that.
That adds to our walkability.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Full move, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-56. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is resolution 19-57.
This is a resolution authorizing the submittal of applications for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Yes, again, staff has recently been informed that MBRPC will be accepting new funding applications. And with our needs in mind and funding commitments already on the books, we have six proposed project applications to submit. I'll just go through them very briefly here. And again, there's a project rank that we need to assign to these projects, and that relates back to how many points it can get. This is only our suggested ranking if council would choose to rank these differently. That wouldn't be a problem to make those changes. The first project listed is a resurfacing project on North Fairfield Road from Crossings Boulevard to the ISIC 75 ramps. Crossings Boulevard is the first signal to the north of Pentagon Boulevard to help orient where that project is. It's mainly concrete pavement, so it would be repair of where the concrete joints are splitting apart. The next project would be again on North Fairfield Road from Lakeview Drive to Crossing Boulevard, basically the gap from where the work ended this year and where the other project is proposed. Additionally, last year, the city received a grant to reconstruct North Fairfield Road from Shaker Town Road to Plantation, along with pedestrian facilities. So we're proposing another grant this year to extend that pedestrian facilities and curve down to Fairbrook School to provide a link for the kids to get to Fairbrook a little bit easier. The fourth project is to widen the road, the bridge on Factory Road. We have another project to extend the three-lane pavement section on Factory to the bridge along with pedestrian facilities. And when ODOT does Super Street, they're building a pedestrian crossing on US 35. So this project would widen the bridge to not only accommodate the wider roadway, but also that pedestrian connection between the two locations. The next one is a project to rebuild the existing side path along North Fairfield Road, primarily along the mall property. As many of you know, it's in poor condition, where this would allow us to build a brand-new path out there. And the last application we have is a new bikeway facility along Shaker Town Road. There's an existing bikeway that runs from Autumn Leaf back to the, to the west that goes to the Ankeny Middle School. There's also a little piece of side path by Farm Brook, where this project would connect the two together and do some repairs to the path on, by Farm Brook. And those are the applications. Any questions, be happy to answer.
Is the order you read those, are your priority of order that you're suggesting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And do we have any discussion?
They're all really good projects.
They are. I'd give them all a 10.
Could you just make sure they all get funded? Geez, that's a hard, could you clarify again, the second one was North Fairfield, Lakeview to?
Crossing Boulevard.
Which one was that?
Crossing.
And Crossing?
Yes. Again, that's that first traffic signal to the north of Pentagon and North Fairfield Road, it's crossing.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-56. Seven, 57. Forgot to put my X there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now, resolution 19-58.
This is a resolution to authorize the Beaver Creek Police Department's acceptance of the Ohio Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Program Grant.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is the FFY 2020 Selected Traffic Enforcement Program STEP Grant. We were notified of our eligibility to receive this grant through the Ohio Department, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, excuse me, to provide funding for high-visibility enforcement, which is a universal traffic safety approach designed to create deterrence and change unlawful traffic behaviors. The HVE combines highly visible proactive law enforcement targeting a specific traffic safety issue. STEP hours must be used to conduct the HVE activities in areas to impact fatal crashes by targeting such violations as occupant restraint, speed, distracted driving, aggressive driving, failure to yield, et cetera. STEP grant eligibility is for a maximum of $17,916.32 of reimbursement to the city for officer overtime and fringe benefits. Included in this amount is transportation fuel cost reimbursable up to 5% of the total labor cost. There is no local match for this grant. The grant period would run from October 1st, 2019, through September 30th, 2020. Staff recommends council approval for the police department to accept this STEP grant.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion to approve resolution 19-58, the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-58. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thanks. Next is resolution 19-59.
This is a resolution to authorize the Beaver Creek Police Department's acceptance of the Ohio Traffic Safety Impaired Driving Enforcement Program Grant.
Thank you. Chief?
Mayor, this is the second grant we're currently operating. This is, I believe, the third year with these grants. The second grant is the IDEP grant, which is directed towards the HVE activities to impact impaired driving and reduce fatal crashes. This IDEP grant is for a maximum of $24,624.48, and it's reimbursing officer overtime and fringe benefits. There's also a 5% transportation fuel cost reimbursement, up to 5% of the total labor rates. There's no local match for this grant also, and the grant period would run the same period as the STEP grant, which is October 1st, 2019, through September 30th of 2020. Again, staff's recommending that council give us approval to accept this impaired driving enforcement program grant.
Thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve resolution 19-59 for the Impaired Driving Enforcement Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-59. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 19-60.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as Kemp Road Interconnect Project, PID number 103590.
Yes, I'm giving again, another project we were successful in receiving grant funds for is to improve the signals along the Kemp Road corridor. The project that we submitted is to reconstruct the existing traffic signal at Kemp and Fairfield, and also the one at Turnbull in Kemp. The other signals will also receive upgrades. They'll be connected to our fiber optic system, battery backup systems, newer controllers, et cetera. The work is planned for, for the summer of 2020. Total project cost is a little bit less than $760,000, with $429,000 in grant monies paying for the project.
Very good. Discussion? Questions?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-60. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Decision items. We have an appointment to make tonight for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I would look from a, a motion to open nominations, please.
Motion to?
To open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I will now accept nominations. Does anyone have a nominee?
I would nominate Richard Porter.
Are there any other nominations?
Mayor, I'll move to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Porter?
Motion to appoint Mr. Porter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint. I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Porter to the unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I would just note that, for the audience, that it's really a six-month, it's not a long term, because we'll be reappointing new people after the first of the year, so I appreciate him stepping forward for this short-term, unexpired term.
It is now council time, and we'd like to start, any Councilmember Littrell, do you have something you'd like to share?
I do. I would like to thank the mayor for providing some information for us, so that several of us attended the Eager Beaver Chain Gang, which was delightful, so thank you for passing on those duties. Those were really fun, and the kids were great, so appreciate that, and it was a nice time. Beaver Creek Chamber had an open house last week, which was very interesting, and saw several, several people from the business community there. Again, Chamber does a lot of great things for small business. And then, just a couple other brief things, the information, please check on construction, because it's very important, so that you watch the signs that we have out there. And then, the Tri-A Truck is coming up, October 5th, I believe, so I think it's, I think it's October 5th, yes. And that's a great event, great family event, just a great event to get out there, and our Parks Department does a great job working with that, so I hope everyone comes out and enjoys it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the Green County Township Association. They hosted their monthly networking opportunity, but this time invited municipalities in Green County to join, saw several council members there, and just want to thank them for inviting us to be good neighbors. And the only thing I want to add, I'm sure other council members will speak to it as well, so I'll be brief, but just thank you to the Beaver Creek Seventh Day Adventist Church for hosting their service a couple weeks ago, I believe, and giving a prayer to our community, our first responders, and recognizing those in attendance. So thank you to the Beaver Creek SDA. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
We had a great United Nations World Peace Day on Saturday. Mayor Stone had a proclamation that was read. We talked about what the Beaver Creek City of Peace is doing. Chuck Kern was there. It was a pretty nice event, if I don't say so myself, and thanks for participating, and the room was full, and I think people appreciate the synergy of just thinking what it takes to have a positive, a culture of positive supportiveness within our community, so it's good. And to work toward world peace, I mean, that's always a good thing, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kern?
Yeah, I would like to echo some of the comments that have been made by some of the council members. I attended the Chamber of Commerce function, which was really nice, a lot of positive comments concerning the city's display and what we're doing. Also, certainly, the Peace Day rally that Councilmember Van mentioned, and of course, the mayor's proclamation, it was really an interesting event. I learned a lot about their function and responsibilities. Also, the Seventh Day Adventist Church, that was really neat. They gave a nice thank you to the city, as was mentioned here by Councilmember Rushing, and very positive. And of course, the township dinner, which we, the township dinner, we participated in, was very positive.
Very good. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. Well, I'm just sounding like a broken record, because I also attended some of the same events as Councilmember Kern, and Councilmember Rushing, and Councilmember Littrell, and Councilmember Van, so I would also like to thank the Beaver Creek Seventh Day Adventist Church for having us. It was a really nice event, it was a really great day, they had the firemen there as well, a couple other members of the community, Soyn was there, Paul Otten for the Beaver Creek Schools were there, so it was a really good event. The Chamber Open House was also wonderful, so I think I might have a small politician in the making, though, with my son, who seems to be very outgoing at city council events. When I was up at the podium for the Community Day Worship Service, he definitely got his two cents in, and I asked if he had anything to say, and the room went deathly quiet, and as on cue, he just screamed in the middle, just to get everyone's attention, so I think I created a monster, but he did, he did really well. So I appreciate all of the events that we have. And just an overall thank you to our staff for constantly looking into grants. We had a lot of them to go through tonight, and they really keep our city moving efficiently. Seeing as how we are on a limited income, I think it's great that we're constantly looking forward and approving these grants, so thank you very much for all the work you do for us. And that's it for me.
Well, thank you. And I'll start off, I'd like to thank you for taking over from me two weeks ago. This has been kind of out of commission for a couple weeks, but it's-
Been to have you back.
It's fun to be back in the saddle, so to speak. But, no, so some of the events that the council mentioned, I was unable to attend, but I was at the Day of Peace, and it was a, that event is growing, it's, it was very well done. The Eager Beavers, I thank the council members that were able to, to fill in on that one as well. I know that they really enjoyed having council members and some of the township trustees and stuff be part of their, their game, so they, they really enjoyed it. I know that they, they particularly pointed out our illustrious juvenile court judge, that was, would point a finger at some of these kids playing football, but no, I'm just kidding. But they, they have really expanded this year. The two football teams, two football youth organizations have merged, back to where it was many years ago, so they have well over 200 participants this year. So they appreciate you guys being there. Homecoming Parade was this past week. I participated in that, and that was, as my wife tells me, that was a mistake, but it was a very nice parade, it just didn't do well for my back, but that's beside the point. And lastly, I'm looking forward to the resurfacing of Dayton-Zenia Road, along out in front of Kroger. It, but I know we've all been patiently waiting on that till after the popcorn festival, so I hope it gets here soon. With that-
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, before we move on, I also want to mention, we also attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Club Oceano.
Yes, we did, yes.
So I know that The Green has been such a big project for everybody up here on council and past council members, so we're happy to see that another restaurant is now calling Beaver Creek and The Green specifically their home, so for those of you who get a chance, check out Club Oceano. It was a really nice ribbon-cutting ceremony, and want to make sure that we keep our businesses growing here in Beaver Creek.
The menu looked wonderful.
I'm sorry?
The menu looked wonderful, too.
Very well, it very much is wonderful menu, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to city manager.
All right, I'll be brief. Under construction, Corshaker Town Road extension continues. On, on, the project is on time for us, starting, beginning work on ditch construction and under drain installation, so we'll continue that over the next few weeks. I did want to mention, Mayor, to piggyback off what Mayor just said, the curb and resurfacing program will continue, they've made good progress. It's anticipated all curb and resurfacing work will be completed by the end of October. At least that was in the latest report that I had, I'm looking at Mr. Mormon. And if I read correctly, and the number of fingers, Dayton-Zenia by Kroger, that stretch between North Fairfield and Haynes, it should be about two weeks. Okay. Be done hopefully two weeks. So yeah, that's, that is a very rough stretch, and everybody will be glad to have that repaved. Just a couple upcoming events, trivia night, September 27th, that's coming up, 6:00 PM at the Golf Club. That's actually been pretty well-attended, from what I understand, you got some trivia junkies out there that really get into that. September 28th at 10:00 AM, Yoga in the Park, and a lot of these events, again, are on our Facebook page, so if, under events. October 5th, Tri-A Truck, which that was mentioned, that's a big hit for kids, because there's not just, sometimes we try to coordinate with other, even construction companies or whatever, and they'll bring up, you know, trucks that we don't have, so they're not just city trucks that sometime come, come in and, and participate, so kids love that. October 8th, and then this is hosted by the Senior Center specifically, Candidates and Issues Forum is October 8th at 10:00 AM at the Senior Center, and that's all happening.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, this is the time when citizens have the opportunity to make any comments they'd like to council. Is anyone here tonight that would like to address council? No one at all? In that case, we will move on. Next item is an executive session, and so, does somebody have the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am moved to enter an executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Advice Code, for the purpose of consideration of conference with city attorney concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Van? Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. The executive session will, does not have any foreseeable action, so we will return to this area to close, open and close the executive session and, and then close this meeting, but there will be no further action taken by council. So you're welcome to stay, but otherwise, we're going, now entering into executive session, what, five minutes?
Ten minutes, we'll see.
Ten minutes, take a 10-minute break in between. Everybody good with that? Five minutes?
Pretty fast.
All right. Sooner the better, thank you.